This is the, uh... Talking about Lot 1, intersection of Harvard Road and Warner Road. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), Scenic Road Law, and Section 250-24 of the Bolton Zoning Bylaws, Scenic Roads, the Town and Bolton Planning Board will hold a hearing upon application of Candle Homes in 269 West Main Street, North Borough, Massachusetts regarding the proposal, proposed removal of a portion of the stone wall and cutting off trees required to construct a driveway for property located on Warner Road identified by the accessor's map as 7(c), parcel 63. So I just want to record, um... The date is that April 9, 2014.
Here's the site plan. And then to give you sort of a locus of the area, this is the lotting question here. This is Harvard Road, Warner Road, here's Drummond Hill Road into Northwoods. So...
And that's the driveway?
This is the driveway that they're proposing up on Warner Road here.
Did anyone have a chance to drive by?
Yeah, I went by. Yep.
I took some pictures to you there, a little bit grainy, but I have printouts for you.
I did too. So this is the entrance to Northwoods. Is everyone familiar with the intersection?
Is this a stop sign in relation to the driveway? Quite interesting.
It stops there?
Maybe there.
It's about 45 yards.
Okay.
Stop sign somewhere right here.
44 yards.
Yep. It's in the opposite end of the road.
You want to give us an overview of what you're doing here, Chuck?
Sure. Chuck Black, Candle Homes. And, um, this photo that I took, um, is where we like to put the driveway. And I've got a couple of red stakes out there. So there's approximately 20 feet of stone wall that would need to come out. And then this picture here is a photo down in Harvard Road where there was no wall and there was a construction access there. And this picture is the corner of the lot. So, and, you know, and this shows you, you know, a lot of this wall is not in very good repair. So what I would like to propose to the board and the town is to let us take out this 25 feet of wall approximately on Warner Road. And we would fill in the construction access road out on Harvard Road. And we'd also take and with any extra stones, clean and improve the corner up here and, you know, rebuild the wall and make it more aesthetically pleasing.
So there's already a cut there? That was pre-existing?
Yes.
And this is around the corner?
Yep. And this is our proposed location.
So...
So again, we, you know, similar to Duchamp's plan, you know, we'd like to come in here with our driveway. And I think we're probably, I'm just going to estimate, we're maybe 200 feet away from Drummond Hill Road. And I frankly don't know the distance to the corner here, but the line of sight is good. To me, it kind of makes this lot more into this neighborhood. And, you know, people aren't coming out to a busier road being Harvard Road.
You were just going to say there was no chance of using that opening that you already have? Where is that in relation to the building? Is it way over on?
It's here.
So it doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't make sense at all with the grading of the septic. You know, nobody, the person buying this house is not going to want their driveway coming all this way across the front. So, you know, studying the lot since we acquired it, you know, I think to me this is aesthetically the best. And unless there's something I'm missing, I don't see any, so they don't see any traffic issues, any sight distance issues. And like I said, our plan would be to take the stones we take out and improve the wall that is, you know...
And what trees would you need to take down?
There aren't any trees that are in the way.
Okay.
I mean, when I went out there, it looked like a couple of trees had already been taken down.
Yeah, the trees.
I don't know what happened, but...
On our property.
We live on the roadside property.
Yeah, roadside property.
It's town property. We live on it.
Okay.
I live right at Drummond Hill, but I'll be the house connecting to it.
Okay, one second. Yeah, we'll give you a chance. Is, so are you Georgia Faye? Here, thank you. Are there any other questions for Chuck?
So can I see your pictures?
They're a little bit grainy, so I don't know.
I have some more pictures, but I want to look.
So just Chuck, as a developer, can you explain to me, you know, why, you know, a site like this needs to be, you know, clear cut?
Oh, okay. We actually haven't, yeah, we actually haven't cleared it completely, but I actually have kept a lot of the trees in the back. I tried to keep it as tight. But again, you know, with the septic systems, we have to build, you need a good amount of room. And the other thing is a lot of the trees, and on this lot are very tall pines. Some of the people that live in Northwoods have had trouble with ice dams. So you have to get a certain amount of sunlight around those.
So could you show me just, you know, very roughly where the...
These are pretty good pictures, yeah.
Where the tree line is.
We've kept a bunch of trees out front. Uh, there is a hole here that was there, and we've kept the trees along Harvard Road. And maybe, I'll draw an imaginary line about here.
Okay.
Um, and so I've kept, you know, this, so there's buffer to this back house.
Yeah, so I only ask because there've been, you know, comments from my brothers just about the dramatic change and, you know, that's not something you can stop you from doing, but I'm just, you know, trying to understand that.
And again, if I can just speak to that for a minute, you know, Jean and I were just through Northwoods and a lot of those houses that we built, you know, we were able to save and protect trees to try to put the house into a natural setting.
Yep.
And, you know, unfortunately, a lot of houses when you're building, you have to make a mess before it looks pretty. So we're not, you know, it isn't our intention because the more trees we take down, it costs more frankly to build the property. It's more site work, et cetera. And originally, when I bought the property, the, it might have been this septic. This was the septic that was going to be built. And instead I built this one, which let me keep more trees here and actually limit the scope of work because I said to my sons, that other septic that was approved, you just backed too far in the lot.
Great, thank you for answering that.
And I would just, I drove through the whole lot, the whole subdivision today too. And, you know, I've been following this subdivision for, I don't know, eight or nine years, right?
A long time.
And since before it started and it was mostly woods and since it's been mostly built out. And I, you know, I do feel like they have done a very good job of saving a lot of trees. You could easily, you know, 20 years ago, people wanted big lawns and you just cut every tree down. And, you know, it's not the Bolton Way, frankly. And I think they've done a good job of not doing that. If you look at those houses there, there, there are a lot of houses that have trees in the front yards and the side yards, and there's quite a few trees around them. And, you know, some people want a bigger yard, some people don't want any tree that could hit their house. And, you know, when you do the math on that, you end up cutting trees pretty far away. You've got to clear enough land for the septic system and the house and the well and the front yard. So that lot right now looks very bare, and that's the way it looks right after you clear it. The sightlines at Warner Road and Harvard Road are excellent at that corner. It's a very big intersection. Come to my house if you want to see bad sightlines. Those are, those are very good, very good. It's a wide road. I walk up and down the street, both sides. Come to my house.
Are you talking about Harvard Road or Warner Road?
Both, from, from all locations around that lot, very good sightlines, very good. And I've seen a lot, there were a lot worse, believe me. So, you know, I'm just, I'm being straightforward with my assessment, having gone there today, looked at this situation, took into consideration the email that was written to the board, went through the entire development, and, um, I think the sightlines are pretty good there. I didn't see a problem.
So are there any more questions before, Martha, are you here for...
I'm here for this hearing, yes, Historical Commission, and as a private citizen.
Would you, did you want to say anything as the chair?
Martha Reddington, 447 Main Street. I'm chairman of the Historical Commission, and we with the Planning Board do scenic road type things. I just wanted to see, I went up to the site today and saw the two stakes that you'd put on Warner Road. One aspect is the house facing Harvard or Warner or kitty corner?
It's facing Warner Road.
Facing Warner. And you are, are you anticipating getting a house number on Warner Road or Harvard Road?
I would like to see a house number on Warner Road.
Yeah, um, okay. And it is a wall that's in pretty bad shape. And there is no wall on the Harvard side. Now, speaking as a private citizen, I am a driving instructor. And I walked, I saw where the stakes were. And it's very confusing when a house is facing one street and it has a number from another street. In some towns, I don't think allow that. So I think it's appropriate that it would have a Warner Street, Warner Road address. But I felt in disagreement with Mr.'s story that for people coming up Harvard, that's a 40 mile an hour speed limit. They're making a right turn, it's not, a 90 degree angle, it's a little bit weaker, I believe. They come speeding around onto Warner Road, you can't see that driveway until you get on Warner Road. And I don't think it's 45 yards from that driveway. 45 yards is like a thousand idgs.
To the end of the, end of the driveway.
To the end of the property.
Well, I'm just talking where's the driveway.
But I agree with you, I walked, I walked on that road and I've almost been hit at that intersection.
I walked on it and I've almost been hit also, that's the reason why I'm here.
So to me, it seemed dangerous.
So let Martha flesh her comments and then we'll...
Yeah, I just felt that that, and knowing that they're going to go 40, it's 30 in the Harvard side, it's 40 miles an hour in the Bolton side. Why? Because I guess it's a straight through. But they're coming ripping around there and they're Porsches and they're Mercedes, and whoo, it's going to possibly cause an accident for the people in the new home to come out. I mean, if they have a Lamborghini, it won't be seen. If they have a big SUV, yeah, it'll probably show.
I'm not following you. You're, you're saying that somebody pulling out of a driveway on Warner Road is...
She's saying heading north on Harvard and bearing...
But they're not on Harvard, this is going onto Warner Road.
They're making a right turn onto Warner Road from Harvard that has a 40 mile an hour speed limit.
Well, they're turning on a side street. I mean, I don't follow that law.
Yeah, they're turning on a side street, not at 15 miles or 20 miles an hour.
I do it at 15 or 20 miles an hour.
It's a very wide intersection.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what struck me the most about this. It wasn't necessarily the wall and the, it is, you know, it's nice that they're going to make the walls better looking and everything, but that was the thing that hit me, it had nothing to do with the wall.
The alternative for this lot, in my opinion, is the existing construction entrance on Harvard. From a, I'm very safety minded, from a safety kind of a standpoint, I think the speed limit's actually 45 coming up Harvard Road north.
Well, coming down, it's 40.
If you're coming into Harvard Road, I'd want it right where you got, you got it as far away from the intersection as you possibly can, right on the lot line. I think it's, from a safety standpoint, I think it's flawless, just my opinion.
Okay, so let's hear from other members of the audience.
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple words.
What's your name?
Paul Parrage. My wife and I live right on Warner Road, just up, just up the ways on the left.
Run over?
36th. So I agree with the gentleman there. I mean, that, where the construction driveway is currently seems ideal. This is a unique opportunity where you've got a corner lot, which is rare, and you've got an opportunity to use Harvard Road entrance and not disturb a, you know, existing scenic road with, with a bylaw associated with it. It just logically, it makes sense to utilize the Harvard side of the lot. I mean, I could see if there wasn't a corner lot and it's only one way in, you know, fine, you know, you can't control that, you have to go in somewhere. But, you know, on a corner lot, there's an opportunity to, to use that Harvard side. So I think it's a great idea, you know, if you, if the board would consider that strictly on that merit alone, just, just being a corner lot and having an opportunity and option at least, to use Harvard Road would be great and not have to deal with it.
Why would it be great? I'm curious.
Well, you have, you have a scenic road, you have a stone wall, and...
They're both scenic.
Well, yeah, they are, but you got one, you have the added choice between disturbing a scenic road and not, and you can have that choice because it's a corner lot. Why not utilize the Harvard side where the existing driveway is, where they're utilizing the, the access point? The stone wall, the beginning of the stone wall is rough. As you get towards, in, towards where the existing, where the driveway is proposed, the stone wall gets better. Then there's a little footpath there. You know, so the wall, the wall gets better as, as it gets closer to the driveway that's proposed. So I'm not really sure if restoring the wall is, you know, an aspect of selling it or not. But, but I think just the opportunity of it being a corner lot and having the option of using the Harvard side, in my opinion, would be a great alternative to not disturbing a scenic road and upholding the existing bylaw. So, and safety being another issue, we can debate that, but I think just having that pure option is, um, to me would be, hopefully that'd be some consideration there on your decision.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Me. Georgia Sahagian, like I said, I'm number 11. I'm lot number two, that, there's a stone wall that divides my house and this lot. So it'll be basically in my backyard.
Your lot number two, right there?
Yes. In the Woodlands area. And mine is strictly, um, mine is the safety. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I've lived on there, I've come out of Drummond. I know how people fly around and, you know, you guys have your opinion, you've gone, you've looked at it, I've lived there, I've walked dogs. You know, I'm out that way all the time, my kid will ride her bike out that way. Bottom line is this, you have people that fly, literally fly around the corner, coming off of Harvard onto Warner Road. Now granted, it's, Warner Road's a slow-moving road, and maybe coming from the other direction may be fine. However, not coming from that direction, coming off Harvard, high school students, new high school student, drivers, new drivers, young drivers, people who really just want to see how wonderful their car can really pick up speed and go. They don't slow down coming around that corner a lot of the times. I've had people who walk that area and the shade of the trees shade them in, and you don't see them until you've turned the corner. And there they are.
Can I ask you a question? I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure it's some, a big concern in that area, but you're talking about the cars turning onto Warner Road.
I'm talking about the cars turning onto Warner Road and where the driveway is proposed.
Right, so you're not, I don't understand what the connection...
The car's going to have a hard time pulling out.
When you're pulling out of a driveway, you're, you're stopped. You stop and you look and you pull out. So I'm not worried about the safety of the person pulling out of the driveway. I hear that you're concerned about the traffic coming out of Warner Road, but this driveway is not going to make that traffic noticeably different or less safe.
What if it was on the corner, but where it is? I mean, it's, you gotta put it someplace.
I'm not following the logic.
You know what, I don't think at this point, really, that no matter what I say is going to change anything because I have the feeling you guys already, you know, it's been done. But I'm just telling you, from a perspective, from my husband's perspective, he's a chief of police, he knows roads. His questions are, you know, that just seems so unsafe for a car to try to pull across. Right now, when you were out looking, the trees have not begun to fill in yet. When they do, right on our property is an easement, it's the drainage easement. It is beautifully landscaped around that drainage easement to try to camouflage it. When that fills in, it's going to fill in that area, which will restrict the sight or the view coming down Warner Road. When that will fill in, and it will fill, and like I said, it's beautifully, it's very thickly done through there. So, I mean, like I said, I don't think anything I'm going to say is going to change anything, but I'm just telling you that you're asking me, Mr. Story. Okay, you're asking Mr. Story, what it has to do with people flying around the road? Very simple. Somebody goes to pull out, in mid-pullout, somebody comes flying around that road, going much faster than what they should, bam. You know, it could be a future, it may never happen, but it could, so...
So are you and your husband, where, where, you've, you've looked at it, you lived there, where did you want to see the driveway?
If I had it mine, and, and strictly this has nothing, if, first of all, don't think because I live in the backyard, I'm sitting here saying, oh my gosh, they're going to put this driveway right in my backyard. We have quite a bit of distance between the house and the stone wall, and we also plan on bringing in some plantings and having some landscaping done to try to restore some of the, you know, a little bit of privacy back there and everything. So first of all, don't think it has anything to do with me having an agenda because I don't want a driveway in my backyard. That's not it. It is strictly the safety. If I had it my way, and again, my husband being in the professional business he's in, that he sees things on constant, Boilston is all full of back roads. You know, he knows what he's talking about. A couple of questions he asked me is, did, did the town's safety department go out and take a look at the area and feel that there, because this is something that they do in their town, where they'll send the town safety officer or the police department out to take a look from their perspective to see, is this going to cause an issue or is it not going to cause an issue? Because they're professionals and they would know if this is something that they can see potentially down the line.
The only other option is to pull out on Harvard Road, and that's a 45 mile an hour.
And that's, yeah, but you have a clear, it's a clear view all the way down Harvard Road. So, I mean, it's, it's just, again, it is, it is the safety. If I had a choice, of course, it's going to be the, already the opening on Harvard Road.
Okay, so, um, the stakes are in, who else goes to check on it?
Harold will check on it when they go for a driveway permit. Harold and I actually did a site visit together when they submitted for a driveway permit, and then that's when we realized that Warner Road is a scenic road and there is a stone wall and trees there, so that's how this kind of came up. But Harold really hasn't commented on the location of the driveway yet, that's certainly something that I can ask him.
May I also have an opportunity to make a statement?
Yes.
Paul Parrage, 36 Warner Road. Couple of things. First of all, it's not even the safety of the people pulling out of that driveway, it's my safety. As I'm coming up the road, I've almost gotten into multiple accidents, and I've actually asked the town about a stop sign at the end of the new development, but it's not a town road gas up yet. So there is no stop sign there. I've had people pulling out.
Yes, there is.
Their email, when was that put in?
I probably installed that maybe a couple of months ago, the police chief asked me to install it, that's it.
Probably because of my complaints. I've almost gotten hit by people who are supposed to stop at that road. So as a person's pulling out, and this afternoon, I took those pictures, and the sun was in my eyes, I couldn't take pictures looking down Harvard Road because the sun was in my eyes. So if someone's pulling out of that driveway and pulling down, going to come down Warner Road, they might not see me coming around the corner. And I really don't want to be hit head-on, or hit someone, head-on rather. The other thing I have to state is, in the bylaws, the bylaws itself, it says, granting and refusing of such consent, the planning board shall consider, among other things, of public safety, scenic views, preservation of historic and regional characteristics and preservation and enhancement of the natural and aesthetic qualities of the environment. I don't care that that stone wall is in disrepair, that makes it historic. I don't care for perfectly aesthetic walls because that's not what is a scenic road. Scenic road means that it was old and is the original stone wall of years ago, when they didn't have these perfect lines and cement and everything holding it together. There were stones stacked on each other by people who were separating their land rights. Going back also to that intersection, two laws don't make a right. Just because we have bad intersections in this town now doesn't mean we can, we want to continue or perpetuate that bad situation. So I don't agree, obviously, with the fact that your road might not be the best. Just because your road's not the best doesn't mean I want my road not to be.
Well, I didn't mean it that way, let me clarify. What I said was that the sightlines there are very good. It is a very wide road, it is a very wide intersection, and to make the assertion that they are bad sightlines is, I find incorrect in my judgment, based on my years of looking at sightlines and looking at intersections.
Did you ever go back and see how many accidents might have been that what you decided was a good sightline?
So, so...
And one other, one other thing. Where they're proposing to take the stone wall down, the gradient on the road is much higher, which me, I wonder if they will have to take out much more than what they're saying from the stone wall. If you look, it's hard to see in this image, but the road is way down here and the stone wall is way up here. There's a big gradient, or height difference rather, to that. So I have to wonder, will they really only have to take out, there's one of the stakes there, that much of the, because they're going to have to bring the gradient down to, you'll have water flowing into the roadway.
So, so Chuck, you're asking for 18 feet?
Yes.
I thought it was 20.
Whatever the application says. And the other thing is...
There won't be any water flowing into the road.
So how will they bring it down then?
They'll have to, they'll have to create a diversion for the water. We don't allow driveways to put water on the road.
Yeah, and they show that in their driveway design here. At the end of the driveway, there's a little point, and that runoff is going to go into this grassed area.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about, you know, the movement of that wall. I mean, really, again, there's, you have two options, destroying a wall or using an area of the other side of the lot that doesn't have the wall and is not affected by the, the bylaw. So I, I'm not quite sure why there's such a need to, for that area for a driveway.
Have you looked at this plan?
I know.
So, so this septic system is here.
Exactly.
And the house is here.
Right, exactly.
So the reason for the driveway on this side is that if we put it over here...
I understand.
It would come across the front of the house. So from a design point of view, it's pretty clear why the driveway should be...
Certainly, the builder, the owner, considering with the building of the town...
I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with septic systems.
No, I'm trying to be very logical here and...
The, the design phase of it obviously can be altered for various reasons. So that's not really a wall, you know, it depends to, for a driveway to be moved. Anything's possible. I mean, I've put enough systems in myself to know that things can be changed, so, um...
Okay, one second. So I just want to finish up with you, ma'am. So you, you, do you share the opinion of, you know, your neighbors that you'd rather the driveway be on Harvard Road? Is that what you're saying?
I, it's illogical there's a road there, and for the construction, I don't understand why we would have to ruin the scenic road that's, you know, the walls are in place, they're historic, and we made it that way for, we only have, what, 42 roads in the town that are historic or scenic roads? Why would we continue when we have the option being a corner lot to not... To not, I don't, is Harvard Road...
We tried to make every road scenic.
Every road except the numbered roots, are scenic roads in Bolton.
Every road in Bolton's scenic.
Except for the numbered roots.
Oh, they're just not on the list, I guess.
Except for the numbered roots, every other road.
Old Harvard is, but not Harvard.
Maybe some of the brand newest ones, like...
Old Harvard's on there, but not Harvard, but anyways.
But this one's on one.
Well, and that, does it, a road with...
Just, just to clarify. If you build a house in Bolton on a piece of land that's on an old road, there's gonna be a stone wall there. And if you own a piece of land, you have the right to put a driveway in.
Right.
Okay? So, they have the right to put a driveway in. You make a logical argument, let me finish, that there's already an opening, why cut another one? Okay? That's a very reasonable, reasonable argument. This kind of tumble-down stone wall is altered all the time, all the time. And he's offering to take these stones and put them back into the stone walls, which is what we typically ask them to do, 'cause we do wanna maintain the stone walls. Martha, I think you can back me up on that, that we do this quite often.
The picture there, the stone wall, that's towards the beginning of the road. I mean, yeah, that doesn't look too well. As you progress down the road, it gets better. But, I mean, the, you know, having that, anyways.
So, Chuck...
I agree, I mean, I wouldn't be here if it was just one way in. If there wasn't a corner lot, I wouldn't even be here. I mean, everyone has the right to have a driveway.
Let's, let's just explore that then. So, Chuck, could you flip this? Could you put the septic system there, put the house here, and use that driveway?
I'm sure there was no testing done in the area that you're talking about. And I have to assume that Ducham, who lives walking distance from here, knows the area. I assume he did this layout, 'cause he thought, as an engineer, it made the most sense, so...
Yeah, so, they, they, they've done the testing, they have a septic system, they also have to have the well 100 feet away from that. Okay?
Where is your well?
So, here's the well. So, you can't put the septic over here.
Well, it's in the backyard area, which is directly opposite. There's a stone wall that...
I don't know if it's in the back.
You want your well upstream of your septic, you can have your septic.
And our septic is in the back, and the well is in the front.
Leaving the well and the septic.
If it was septic, would it be closer to your well?
Yeah, no.
No, our, our well is in the front.
This is a hearing, there is an issue, it's a discussion, so we're just kinda gonna go through the process. So, does anybody have any last comments briefly? Martha?
Yes, Martha, historical commission. There is a ruin of an old house, of the Moore House, that was there at the northeast corner of Warner Road. My considerations really didn't have to do with the historic, it was the safety, and the fact that if the house is facing Harvard, I think it should have a Harvard number. Because it's confusing, when you go to a town and you have a house that's facing Harvard, and it's got a number from Warner. So, I was thinking, wherever you decide, it would be nice if the board could recommend that, that the number be on the side road where the driveway entrance is, just for clarity.
It looks like it's facing Warner, right?
It is, and I wholeheartedly agree with that lady's comment.
And he hopes to get one. But, but the firemen are the ones who do that, so just maybe you could recommend to the firemen that if it's gonna face Warner, it has a Warner number.
That's what's in this plan also.
But if they use the one on Harvard Road, which I actually prefer, it shouldn't have a Warner number if it's got a Harvard driveway.
Oh, I see.
It can be confusing to people who are not familiar with the area. Thank you.
Last comment?
And mine is, again, you know, it's, again, the safety. I mean, I suggest you maybe have safety to go out, town safety, or your police chief to go out and, and take a look, and, and look at the safety, because I'm telling you, the people, they fly around Harvard Road, and there's been quite a few misses. People fly down Warner Road, right in the middle of the road. And so, I mean, it's strictly safety. Now, Mr. Story, I know you've probably built a million houses, and that's your part, that's your specialty, as you, you know, pointed out and everything, but I'm also gonna tell you, my husband's been a police chief for more years than you could probably imagine, and, and he really, you know, suggests that maybe somebody that is in that line of work, go out and take a look at where the proposed area is. For safety, it really doesn't seem like enough to try to clear that if somebody's coming down the road at you, and you're already part of the way off. Yes, we all come, we all stop at the end of our driveways before we go off, but when you think that gets cleared, and you go to take off, and suddenly, somebody rounds that van, you're gonna be right smack in the middle of a, of an accident. But again, you guys are the only ones that can send someone out, take a look at it, you all have your professional opinions on things. You know, builder to builder, I, I understand, you understand the concept of everything, but as someone who lives right there, I mean, that's, that's just what I see, it just doesn't seem that far to that stop sign.
Well, I wanna thank you for coming out, and, you know, this is a hearing, and, you know, I do, you know, I think it's important that you get a chance to share your opinions. I don't think any, you know, I'd like to think that we haven't made a decision on this, but I would also like to say that, you know, this is a fairly typical, you know, application, and, you know, it would be very hard for us to find a reason not to, you know, approve this. But I'm glad, you know, it's good that you came out, and, you know, we will, we will give a vote on it.
If it pleases the board and the neighbors, we did, of course, at the suggestion of the police chief, install a stop-stop sign on Drummond Hill. If the police chief or Harold Brown wanted a couple of signs in either direction that said, slow, children at play...
Sounds like that's an issue anyway.
I'm sorry, sir.
Sounds like it's an issue with or without the driveway.
And, yeah, so if it pleases the board or the town for Kendall Homes to pay and install a couple of signs like that, we'd be more than happy to.
We're on our next steps with this, to close the hearing and then we vote. You can, or you could choose to consult with the police chief and the fire chief.
To, yeah, ask them to go take a look at it.
I'm making a motion to close the hearing, please.
Okay. Wait a second.
You don't want... If you're gonna have someone go look at it, you don't wanna continue the hearing.
Okay.
So, do we have a motion to continue the hearing?
I think, in the interest of due diligence and making sure that everyone realizes, this board works for the town of Bolton, and we're trying to do the right thing for Bolton, it would make sense to continue the hearing and ask the police to take a look at it and give us their input, and then we could vote on it at the next meeting.
One second, bud.
Do you ever say aye?
Aye.
So, we continue it till the next meeting.
So, we'll continue this for the April 23rd?
Yep.
That everyone knows that, and everything.
Thank you for coming.
Could you tie a slow traffic sign to the driveway bill or something like that? Or would that just be a...
To what?
If, if, you know, to install a, what's the speed limit on Warner Road? Does anybody know? 25 or 30? 25 or 30?
It's probably, it's probably one of the unmarked roads.
530, yeah, you're probably right.
So, that's, I thought that was like 40. And that's clearly marked, right? Chuck, you've got two stakes out there?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, you ask...
I don't get the argument. It seems to me like it'd be less safe on Harvard Road.
I can't imagine them saying, will the driveway...
The current hot path is basically right at the intersection of the two roads. It's like the most dangerous place you could do.
And to try to pull out onto Harvard Road, I can't imagine, you know...
Line of sight, various locations.
And once again, if the police chief or Harold wants us to put a couple of signs up, people will have to...
Yeah, I'll mention that to them.
Yeah, so I just say, why, you know, maybe done one or two of these in my time, and it seems rare that we have, like, three, we haven't had such a three of butters that upset.
Right, they were pretty upset.
Yes, and again, you know, we lived in Northborough for a long time, there was a lot of scenic roads, and we had, you know, and generally, the whole discussion is about, what are you gonna do with the stones, when you move them? So, and again, by the corner, there's really no wall there, so, but, you know, whatever, you know, works out, we can please the butted screen, so...
So, our next item, we're talking about the backwards.
Did you have a preparation for this?
I did. So, two pieces of business, which the first one is the simplest one. We're, of course, trying to get the road accepted at town meeting, and there's a small punch list open with Conservation Commission. I spoke to Carol in person yesterday, and one of the items is, I guess, there is a fee due when they issue a certificate of compliance. So, she gave me the paperwork.
Can you give that to her?
Please, thank you.
Okay, sure.
And some of the punch lists that Carol has identified is weather-dependent. And I said, we're more than happy to do the punch list. I said, but, you know, we just got rid of the snow, then we had heavy rain, and I said, I don't wanna go into an area and make a mess. And I, so I'm on the agenda for the 15th. This board still has a bond they're holding for completion and road acceptance, so I'm perfectly fine that we hold that until conservation's all set. I'm gonna go speak to the Conservation Commission on the 15th. If they want me to put up a cash bond to satisfy their items, I'll be more than happy to do that. But it would not make sense to try to bring a bobcat into a muddy area and seek out a site for a little bit of riprap, so...
I think there were some items on that punch list, though, Carol, 'cause I had a conversation with Carol just the other day, and she was saying that there were some things that potentially you could do manually. Have you addressed that at all?
Well, here's, what I said to her is, I'm gonna go there Monday with my sons.
Yep.
And if there are any items we can do easily and manually, we will. But if there's something that requires a piece of equipment, one of them is, she wants some area mowed.
Yeah.
Well, it's obviously too wet.
So, she wants you to mow it so she can inspect it, they can inspect it?
Well, it's part of the maintenance for the detention base, and it's mowing the berms, basically.
So, and again...
So, the trees don't grow on them as well?
Yeah, and Brendan Ducham, he estimated the value of her punch list at about $1,500. So, and I, so again, I said, we'll do what we can prior to town meeting, but I think everybody wants that road accepted, I think, so...
We'll find out on the town floor. No, I think you're right. I'm much already.
So...
It's gonna be a creative...
So, but again, I will, as I told her, I'll speak to Carol on Monday, and we'll continue working on that.
And at some point, I need to have Fred Henry go out and do this kind of inspection?
Yep.
Do you have any concerns about schedule with that?
I would say you should send him out, whatever you want.
I think I would prefer to do that before town meeting.
Oh, definitely. Well, again, the whole idea...
As soon as possible.
Yeah, the whole idea was that we were gonna let these roads go through the winter.
Yep.
We saw absolutely no issues through the winter, and unless I'm wrong, I think this might have been one winter, we got zero complaints about blocking, assaulting.
I don't recall any other...
So, that was good, and we had a terrible winter.
Yeah.
So...
So, Fred can do that soon, so if anything comes up, that needs to be done.
Okay, and Fred Henry is paid in full.
And it's because of right now, right?
Right, we've paid for all of his inspections. So, the last, I think, thin piece of business is the road acceptance fee. And the road acceptance fee, 4130 lineal feet. And we have a check here, and what we're here to ask the board is whether the normal fee is $3 a foot. We've written out a check here for 50% of that, and our larger, Jean and I, is that, as everyone knows, in essence, our partner in this project went bankrupt. We feel we did the right thing, we finished the project, spent a couple hundred thousand dollars to finish that road, and so we're hoping that this board would consider a reduction in that road acceptance fee. And the other thing Jean and I say is, we don't even understand what the fee is for, because we paid all the inspections. So, here's this check, and...
So, so the calculation is, what did you say, $43?
Yeah, 4130 lineal feet.
So, $1,390 would be the $3 per?
Yes, sir.
What was the linear feet, I'm sorry?
4130. It's on the back of this check, 4130 lineal feet.
So, is that an official number from Ducham and Dillis? Or, you know, where's that number coming from?
Ducham and Dillis.
Okay, so, can they, you know, they need to send us something on their stationery, not the back of the envelope?
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, on that calculation. So, what was the total, Erica?
Or the amount?
Not the check.
And that's $3, but...
Yeah.
And is that only what it is, or is it, are you paying hard?
So, here's the history. We've always had a road acceptance fee. I think it was, I'm not sure, you could research this, Erica, a flat number, like $1,500 or $1,800 or something like that. And probably five years ago, six years ago, I don't know, somewhere in the past, we changed our fees. We looked at fees of other towns, and one of them that we changed was the road acceptance, and we changed it to a flat fee versus a X number of dollars per lineal foot. And I think we saw other towns were doing that.
Wait, the other way around, right? Saying you changed it to X per foot.
There still is, it still says, it's a minimum of, I can't remember what it is.
There was an Erica's email, it was 1,600-something dollars, probably.
Or $3 a lineal foot, whichever is larger.
Yeah, okay.
And the logic, I think, is that the more road you're taking over, the more responsibility the town is taking over, and, and, you know, you're right, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the acceptance fee, you'd have to go back in the history of...
I mean, it doesn't get earmarked for any one thing in particular, but, I mean, you have to also take into consideration that the town is gonna have to maintain that now in perpetuity, so...
I actually think the logic was...
The town gets taxes.
Yeah.
The town's been getting taxes for eight years.
I think the logic is that there's a cost to accepting a road, and, I mean, obviously, we had our town attorneys involved, we have our town planner involved, so, you know, there's meeting, there is, so beyond, beyond the engineer, there's a cost to the town. Now... Town planner hours.
Is this the longest road to be accepted since it's been in, I guess?
I don't recall...
It's unknown.
...the last road that we accepted. I think it was the Oaks.
But I don't know, with the linear... But I don't know with the linear.
And I don't recall what fee we charged. We should check that out in light of this, because I actually think, and I'm full of ideas, so.
That's intriguing.
Believe me, that's about the start of the door. I, I think that that's a big number. I don't think that we've ever charged that number before. And, you know, one thing that Chuck points out, I don't know if everybody knows this. You were, weren't you originally a 50% partner in this with another developer?
Yes.
Who went bankrupt and, and walked away? And at that point in time, what could happen, let's just say both developers walked away, there'd be a lot of undeveloped property with very little infrastructure in, and even though we have, you know, we hold things, it's never enough to really get things fixed. It, it's, it's not a situation that a town wants, to be in a situation where development doesn't get finished and you gotta figure out how to, how to finish it. So, you know, I'm sure he made money on the project, but, but he did deal with that situation and, you know, basically finished everything. So I, I don't think this is an unreasonable request. I think the number is still a very, you know, paying half of it is still a good number for the town of Bolton in terms of what the cost is for us to accept this road.
I mean, I sort of agree with you, but, I mean, it'd be setting a precedence for future requests.
Well.
I mean, if you wanna say.
And again, I realize, like I said, I'm leaving you guys with this, but I, I think you wanna look at that, because.
If you say, or if you hit, you know, $5,000 above that, you can do 50% or something. I mean, it's not fair to the next road. I don't know. I mean, I understand the situation too, but.
I would, I'm sure you'll find in Jenny's records, when we changed our fees.
I can certainly do that.
And what the logic was. And I, I just remember that that was one that changed more than any other, you know, in terms of the value. And, and I really remember, and again, don't, you know, I say, I always say these things I remember, and I'm not sure, but, that's why I say check the records. That the reason we did it was not because we had a compelling reason to do it, but because we saw other towns doing it, you know, and is that a good reason? I don't know.
I wish the money could get earmarked for road repair or something.
How much latitude do we actually have? I mean, is this something that we can waive?
It's in our regs, so we can do whatever we want to it, other than increase it.
And what, is this a simple majority?
Just to let you know too, I talked to Don, the town administrator, about this, and he didn't, he didn't recommend that we waive the fee, because he felt the same way, that would be setting a precedence, and then having to do that for other developers that came in. He was not for the reducing the fee.
I mean, if we wanna change the, the structure to it, I'm okay with that, but it's just, then we get put in the position where somebody says, well, you did it for him.
Well, it's just, you know, for me, it's like a big company, little company, like, would we let a single homeowner do this? You know, this is, this is a big fee, but it's a big development. And it was fully built out.
Yep.
You know, a lot of money was, you know, made, you know, so would we do this? Would we do this for a single homeowner? Would we do this for...
What do you mean by the, if they wanted to build, if they wanted to make a long private driveway?
If they gave us and said, well, you waive the driveway fee, or half the driveway fee.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, I wanna, I wanna get into Bolton, but I wanna, you know, I wanna pay less, or, you know, people with a shared driveway, three or four houses on a driveway, hey, you know, we've got this long driveway in over the swamp, and, you know, we want a break. And it's just like.
What would you do in that case?
You know, I hear, you know, we, on, on this board, we hear a lot of, like, we've heard stories, you know, from developers about, they're hard luck stories. And, and those stories, you know, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what the business is, you know, what's going on, whether, whether developers, you know, whether it's a really tough business, or developers have a really hard time saving money when times are good for when they're bad. But there seems to be a problem in the business model where you have these bankruptcies or these threats, you know, frequently. And to me, it's, you know, I think it's important, the developers who wanna come to Bolton need to show that they have, you know, they have the business model, and they have, you know, they have the backup money to build the development from start to finish, and that it isn't this kind of, you know, drama and soap opera type of thing, so.
So, I'd like to just give one perspective on that.
Yeah, I'm against, I'm against the way, you know, provide, giving.
So, developers, builders, people who build homes are, you know, subject to the housing market, which is good most of the time, but it is cyclical, just like our economy, you know, it comes and goes. And, you know, prior to 2007, we were building over 4 million houses a year in the United States. And then it fell to 500,000 houses. So the market fell 80%. So the people who survived and finished projects are the best people. They're the good ones. They know what they're doing, because a lot of the other guys went bankrupt, because it was such a, you know, it was the worst collapse in the housing market that, that this country's ever seen. So that, you know, that's just a perspective. It's real, and it's not just bad management or not putting money aside. You know, that was a pretty significant, major, major event that we went through in the last six, seven years.
May I make one other comment? Is that one of the things that Jean and I didn't do, is we didn't do the research to see, when was the subdivision approved? What was the road acceptance fee at that time? And we didn't ask an attorney, are we still actually under that set of rules or laws?
You are for eight years.
Okay.
Once you get your, your subdivision approved.
I'd check that, 'cause I think if, I think if you checked when we changed them, and you checked when it was approved, it's just, that's just an idea, that that might make it easier for everyone to agree that, you know, by, by law, you were under that.
And I guess that Jean and I came here, in our minds, in good faith, and we said, well, we have logic why we wanna propose paying half. The road cost is $200,000 to finish, our partnership should have paid 100, but we reached into our pocket to pay that 100. And now we've got 35 residents in there that are happy, hunky dory.
Paying taxes.
And, and for many years.
They've been paying taxes.
They've been paying taxes, and our son plowed the road.
Yeah.
So, we don't think it's an unreasonable, we're not, we are good business people, and we are very good builders. And so, you know, we're basically looking for some help.
I mean, I kinda agree with you, but it's just, it's tough to, I mean, the bylaw's there, it's tough to just pick and choose.
Can, can I suggest that we do this research? Just, you know, in the interest of the town and the precedent and everything else?
I can definitely find out when we made that change to that fee and see how it correlates with when they had their, got their permit.
I'm, I'm pretty certain it was after you, you, 'cause I know that it was like 2002 or something, '3?
Well, I don't recall. I hear it was stamped 2003 in our pocket.
So its file date is not approved?
Again, I am glad that we completed it, Jean and I drove through there, as I already said. It's a beautiful looking subdivision. We feel we.
So we got approval 2003, May 1?
We feel that we accomplished a lot. We accomplished a lot getting that road finished. Mr. Hamway said it's one of the best jobs he's seen.
So I stay with it.
And so, we're not here to argue, we have no, right, what I, unless the chair wants to do something, I'd like to leave this check here in good faith. And we'll be back in the next planning board meeting anyways, the 23rd. That gives us time to resolve it. And if the board, you know, if we do the research, and we don't have a link to stand on, and the board says, well, no, in order for us to go on the town floor, we're gonna pay it, then we have to pay it, so.
And it'd be good to know what the Oaks did. And then your point you said about, I mean, that is a good point, they filed before the bylaw, and how it's.
So.
We can see when the Oaks filed too, because I know that was before my time, starting 2005 or so.
Has the planning board ever reduced application fee?
Sure.
Since you've been on the board?
Yeah.
It has. So this wouldn't be setting a precedence then, if you put it in the past?
Well, I mean, I, I agree with the logic that if you set on a particular issue, let's say the same developer came through, he'd say, well, the last, the last time you did this for me. Or if somebody else who was savvy would say, what did you do on the last development? So, there's logic to that whole precedent issue. But there also are extenuating circumstances, and sometimes are reasonable reasons to make a change.
When we negotiated before, why did we reduce the fee?
Excuse me?
When we negotiated before, what was the reason for reducing the fee, do you remember?
I can remember several instances where it happened, but, but it doesn't, you know, I don't, I don't have details to tell you right at this minute. I mean, certainly, there've been many cases where, you know, nonprofits have come in and said, I can't pay the fee, and we waived the fee. You know, there are a variety of reasons why the board may waive a fee.
So, the 1,800 minimum, that's for large subdivisions, or that's any subdivision?
Any road.
Any road that's being accepted.
Accepted.
Yeah. Whichever fee is large.
But then what is the fee that, what is the fee for a single driveway or a common driveway?
Common driveway is $2,700. It's not cheap. And it's $165 for each lot that you're creating that's having access to the common driveway. So, it's $2,700 plus, yeah.
Okay, so that's a, that's a big fee for, does anybody live in that type of neighborhood? Have a common driveway? You know, there are many in Bolton. And then what's the fee for just a single driveway?
For just a regular driveway, it's significantly cheaper. It's like a hundred bucks, I think, or something. It's maybe 200, but it's not thousands.
For a new curb cut? I thought it was like 1200.
It's a thousand dollar bond, but you get that back.
Right. I could be, I can check right back. Why don't you just check it?
The other thing is, I don't know on the common driveways whether there are inspections, who pays the fees.
They, they, yeah, they do.
They do.
Yeah, we do the same thing.
Yeah. You know, and again, in this case, it's not like we've got a special town meeting that does an extra cost to the town, and again, we pay the inspections. But I think we're gonna thank you for your time tonight, and we'll see you on the 23rd.
Yes, and I'll let you know the hearing. Well, I guess 7:30.
All right.
Since you'll be first.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, are the common driveways directly applicable, because under those circumstances, will the town ever plow them?
That's true.
Or maintain them in any way?
Well, it's just, what are the fees?
So for a single driveway, it's 215, for a share, it's 430.
So, when you talk about fees though, remember, for a driveway or a common driveway, you have a, a filing fee. There's not an acceptance fee.
Right.
Well, there is actually for, for a common driveway.
There is?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, well, you could add up the fees.
Yeah.
With a subdivision, you have the filing fee, you have all the engineering fees through the whole process, and, and you have the as-built, and then you have the, you know, the, the acceptance fee. So, I'm not saying it isn't very large, and it doesn't put a burden on the town, but I'm just saying, you have to add all those fees up. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's significant.
But you're looking at oranges and apples. Someone that's gonna do a subdivision as a developer, he's looking to make money. Someone that's putting in a single driveway, just something.
No, no, we were talking about common driveways, that's usually a developer's.
For me, it's like, you know, for me, it's, you know, who's gonna be coming to us and asking for, could ask for a waiver? And, you know, so, and how would you feel, like, okay, Chuck Black gets 50% off, but, you know, Mr. and Mrs. New Bolton, no.
Everything could become a negotiation.
But it sounds like the opposite happened, if we're waiving fees for nonprofits, but we're sticking it to the developers.
Oh, oh, how many?
Well, that's just what I'm hearing.
Which nonprofit would that be? The churches? Do you have a problem with that?
That's just what I heard. I heard we're waiving fees for nonprofits.
I pulled that on the back of his head.
These big, rich developers.
What are the nonprofits in town? They're all churches.
Bolton Youth Baseball.
Yeah. The Cross team, right now.
You're gonna, you're gonna hit the cross team.
So, anyway, I agree with you on the precedent, I really do, but I would look, 'cause, you know what? I think the, I think we gave the Oaks a waiver, and I think they paid half. That's what I think. Check it out.
I don't think we should give any waivers on the basis of municipalities taking on market risk. That's not our, I mean, cyclicality, I don't give my borrowers waivers because they're tough shit. You're in the market.
Well, I agree, there shouldn't be a waiver, but I think we.
But if we did, then, yeah, that's a huge story.
We imposed a fee that was unreasonable, is what I'm saying to you.
I agree, but it does sound insane. At the point, $200,000 on the road, you have to pay.
Do you know how big that road is? Do you know how much time Jenny spent on that development, and then, you know?
So you're saying just the cost of her?
There are just so many costs. So, you know, Harold goes out, how many times did he go out? How many times did we feel complaints and phone calls? It's just like a big hassle. And it went on for eight years.
Well, that is the biggest issue. That used to be that would last two years, and now they go on for 10 years.
It's like all that administrative.
Thirty-five years. It would be nice, I don't know, I think we should have a road fund or something, I mean, not just go into the ether. I don't know, if the money, it seems like it should go towards.
I think you should take that whole, sure.
But if you asked advisory, they'd be like, you need to collect that money.
Yeah, but DPW has its own line item for that.
Yeah.
So.
And I guess it just goes in the mix. Okay.
Does it just go in the mix?
It does. It goes into a general fund.
Okay, moving on, moving on. So we have a new candidate for the planning board, John Ritchie, who's right here.
Hi.
John?
Hi, John.
Come forward.
Awesome. We just wanted to make it interesting. I hired all these actors, just to see what my demeanor would be. No sweat.
Just the tension in the room.
Are you sure you still wanna run? I, I am, because I thought, first of all, I was really appreciative of how respectful the discourse was, and I thought that it was cool that everyone gathered input. I, I think, my personal opinion on the wall, it looked really dilapidated, and if they can preserve the heritage and the essence of the character by making it a little bit more aesthetic and accommodating, you know, development without impacting what everyone loves about Bolton, I don't see a problem with that.
And we do that in the normal course.
Yeah, and, and, but we're lucky to have citizens that are passionate about their Bolton identity.
That is true. And we will meet them, all.
No, it's, it's all academic to what happens next door to you, and, you know, you just have to wait for that experience.
Are you guys ever shaken down or assaulted at Bolton Orchard that's passing by?
Probably. I'm only, we're shooting that at the dump, but that's for signatures on the table. Two, two years ago at the town meeting, I got a finger in my chest.
You did?
But that's before you joined.
That was before I was in the planning board. That was EDC related.
They won't do that to you now.
That was EDC related, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
It was, yeah, it wasn't a pretty town meeting. I'm so sad I was in Florida for that. Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't pretty, that's for sure.
Well, I think joining town boards has a way of, like, co-opting your, you know, your radical side, you have to, like, I think.
Yeah, totally, I totally agree with you, really. You definitely see all sides of, you have to look at all sides of the argument. You can't be just thinking on one side.
It was funny, that woman said, you said you were a builder. I said, I never said that, did I?
My wife and Mark, or someone else said it.
Well, anyway, I am a builder.
She also said we were all builders, which, I do have a hard time with two, I mean, you already talked on the board, has there ever been two members serving at the same time with similar names? Because I have an H and you have no H, which I had a similar situation at work. My boss called me H and.
So by law, we already changed my name. It's because of Jonathan.
Actually, what am I talking about? Who am I sitting next to?
Yeah.
It's a big concern for you.
Well, John, do you have a name?
No, it's John Ricci.
Okay.
So John-John and Jonathan, we go free.
It's a quorum of Johns.
Yeah, that's frightening.
Someone I find that oppressive. I don't know, for Ralphs or something. And, and you moved to town recently?
Uh, we built up at Sunset Ridge last May. Well, it started the previous September, but we closed this past May. So the common road thing, because we're still dealing with the same thing with our, our builder, I can kind of empathize with, I guess, all sides.
So we've had members of your community come in.
How do you like it?
I like it.
Beautiful view, huh?
Yeah. Incredible, yeah. I, I travel a decent amount, so I like the, the townhouse kind of feel, but I, after seeing what Van Heritage went through to complete it, and then through the economic downturn, but also understanding that they did their best to accommodate, you know, current residents, it's a pretty amazing thing to be a developer. I'm not, I don't wish to be. I give you guys a lot of credit, but, you know, I sing for a living, so.
Good for you.
It's, uh, we're happy we're here. It doesn't hurt to be between a golf course and a winery either.
Well, I'll tell you, it's interesting, just, just for history, that was one of the biggest disputes this town ever had, getting that thing permitted. It was one of the first forty Bs in the town, which is using a law, state law, that allows for higher density than the zoning allows. It ended up going to the, the, uh, state housing court, and they basically told the town of Bolton to negotiate with a developer and come up with something that would work. And at the end of the day, I think it's a pretty nice development.
It's a good project.
I'll tell you, the reason I'm here, the reason why we came and spent our money here, is because someone that I grew up with owns one of those forty Bs. And I honestly would have not known about Bolton as a town unless that person brought me here. So from a personal standpoint, I, you know, I think it was a, a nice entree, yeah.
So John's, you know, he's been here a year. He's the perfect person to ask, why did you choose Bolton? Our high taxes and our excellent school and our winery.
Back of a.
Two golf courses and.
Stone walls.
Stone walls, hiking trails.
But it's marginal though. Like, so I came from Wayland. I grew up my whole life, went to Babson and Walsley. So I've been around the Metro West area my entire life. So the taxes are higher, but only marginally so. And I already have experienced what those higher taxes bring so far as a lifestyle and education, et cetera. So I think there's always gonna be a balance. It makes sense to have a balance and make sure that you're getting the best of both worlds so that you're not pricing people out, but you're not diminishing a lifestyle that people came for. And I think that, to me, as a guy that's been here for a year, I personally came here because every time I drive home, I see, you know, trails I can run, horses on a farm, you know, a town store. I think it's really cool. But I also see the need for, not necessarily gentrification, but some kind of appropriate development that will encourage growth in a Bolton way.
Do you know about the village overlay by law that's proposed?
I'm familiar with it. And I know that there's a supplementary design committee associated with it to ensure that the aesthetic is, uh, what is over here. So like the Bolton Finance Bill and the Colonial of Long Main Street. And that is more or less where they're trying to stay in terms of look, right?
Good thing about the overlay is you would get more housing like Sunset. You would get more, probably lower taxed housing, I would assume. I mean, lower assessed housing.
Well, a variety of housing options is the way I like to look at it.
Yeah.
You know, everybody can't afford the five hundred thousand dollar house, so it's, it's nice to have one and two bedroom condo and, you know, single family home, uh, different price points that allow different people to live in the town.
Yeah, I think if it, as long as it's contributing to what the town wants, then great. Having it just to have it probably wouldn't make sense. You know, you don't wanna just put something in to say, oh, we got this too. But if it contributes value to the town's value proposition, then sure. And I'm still learning about that. It's gonna be a great education for me to learn from you guys and, and learn from our, you know, fellow Bolton residents. We're Boltonians, what are we? Bolton people, we're Bolton.
Boltonites.
You would know that.
I think it's Boltonite.
Does that go back to the, uh, the mining that's done here?
I think that's right.
Oh, that's right. That isn't a Smithsonian. I was very proud when I saw that.
Boltonite? Yeah. I thought it's like, you can only find it here in Bolton and.
In one example, in a Smithsonian.
No, yeah, that's right. Yeah. It's too location.
Well, have you gone to town meeting before at all in Wayland or anywhere else?
I'm sure I have, but not intentionally to learn about the system or because I was passionate about it. I figured now would be a good time because I still have perspective on being new, but I've been here a year and seen the town and have an idea of appreciation for it. And I think there's a lot of potential here. I'd like to be part of managing and shaping it. And I would be excited for the opportunity.
Great. That's awesome. Looking for people who are interested, always.
Yeah, so we have the potential to have a full board. That's great.
All men.
All dogs.
Poor Erica.
We did have four women for a while.
Well, you know what? Whenever anyone comes who's really passionate and, and has a perspective that, you know, this is what I think Bolton's about, this is what Bolton people, we should be worried about, this is what the planning board should be doing. Many times in the past, I've said, well, you know, you should run for a town board, because there's people like you that we need involved, because you have perspective, you care, uh, and, and that's how you get involved and you make a difference. You know, you certainly have much more influence than you do if you just go to a meeting and give your opinion.
Certainly. Can I, I don't know if this is fair to ask or if it's asking too much, but what is the general consensus right now that you guys feel on the board and also within the town so far as development is concerned and how it impacts taxes? Because I hear that at times. People are concerned about that stuff, but, uh, do people feel like the tax rate is being put to good use? Because I'm still new enough where I don't know that.
I think in general, people think it's high. However, when you look at, I mean, there's been studies on our spending and where we are compared to other towns. We're kind of average in how much we spend. The problem is the percentage of residential to business tax rate. I mean, but people do move here knowing that. So like you were saying, you know, some people would like maybe a little bit more. I think in, when was the, the master plan done? It was at two thousand and five. There was kind of like a big survey done. And the consensus was that, you know, people would like development, but more on the smaller kind of village feel, small shop. Nobody wants, you know, it's one hundred percent probably, maybe ninety percent, nobody wants a Walmart, big box stores. Nobody wants to turn Bolton into that. But I think the consensus is, um, you know, a little bit extra, a little bit extra would be nice. Maybe another, you know, smaller. And whether that's viable, you know, can those businesses survive, that's a question too. But, but I, I think, general people think the tax rate's high, but I'm not sure that that's the sole reason why you want, would wanna add.
Right.
Stuff to town.
Yeah.
And, and it's tough to cut anything on the budget. I mean, I know there's like lots of discussions going on. I mean, it's, it's tough to, you know, it's, there's not tons of, of waste. I mean.
People that are in the know feel like it's, it's put to good use.
I think so in general. I mean, like, I know, um, there's, there's one group, you gotta, you see, send out all these emails about how, you know, you could cut pinch here, pinch there, and that's probably true. You probably could cut things somewhere, but I don't think, you know, Bolton is always excessive. I don't know.
Wayland to me.
I think, I mean, I think there'd have to be some radical cuts, like we'd have to share fire and police with three other towns the way we do the school, like if you really wanted to pull the budget down. But they've been going at it on the advisory committee and.
Or sending students to private school.
It doesn't seem like, you know, they're just like little bites. And that's good.
There was an article earlier this year, maybe it was last year, I'm sorry, that our scores have never been higher and our attendance has never been higher on AP exams and AP testing and classes and all that. So it's clear that something is going right in education. And that's personally what I care about. I have a three-year-old, and I don't intend on putting him in private school. I don't see a need. Uh, and, you know, if you do, great, that's cool. But I remember growing up in Wayland and not having that brand new town center there, and I liked what Wayland was like in the eighties, where I could ride my bike around, and I thought that we could have stayed in Wayland, we could have bought there, built there. We came here because we thought they pushed it too far, too huge. The character's gone.
Well, in terms of residential development, I think, you know, when you talk to members of the advisory board, they, you know, in terms of the taxes that come in, you know, how does that benefit the town? You know, is it enough? And I think the school has room up to a point, but then, you know, past that, you know, the taxes that come in really don't, aren't enough. I think there's a consensus on that on the advisory boards, the taxes that come from housing, new housing aren't enough. So I, I think development is a big issue in terms of, you know, Eric is looking at it, where we are in terms of our buildout. But I think, you know, Doug said we're halfway there. So if we're at four thousand, four thousand, we could go up to eight thousand.
We're five.
We're at five, okay.
What's this number?
And we could go to ninety-five.
Population.
Oh, we're a little more than half.
Oh, population wise?
Population, but that's.
With our current salary.
That's related to lots, vulnerable lot.
So you could essentially double with the room we have?
Not quite, but.
Yeah, but does that take into account potential housing developments with the village overlay it might be? I mean, that might, that might.
So, no, I mean, when the, when the, uh, the buildout study was done by the state, um, it was a while ago. So it, 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 it looked at how much developable land you had left and, and what your zoning was and, you know, did a projection. And if it was a hundred percent built out, which, you know, when you get into the really close suburbs of the city, you know, every piece of land has been bought and has been built on. So that's the scenario. But it's a, um, you know, it, it, it doesn't take into account the rate at which we have preserved land. You know, we have tremendous amount of open spaces preserved forever.
Right.
We have some landlocked lots that can't easily be accessed either.
But if they are, you all of a sudden, that's a few hundred people.
It did take, it does, of course, take into account wellens and things like that, because the assumption, you know, obviously you can't build on pond or whatever.
So how long did it take to go from twenty-five hundred to five thousand?
Well, we, we, yeah, I, I could show you all that stuff. We, we grew in the eighties and nineties.
When four ninety-five probably went in. It's one step you were.
There was one decade, I think it was the nineties. We were the fastest growing town in the whole, in the whole state.
That's beautiful. From eighteen seventy to nineteen seventy, it went.
But it's, it's percent of population. You know, we were so small that to go from twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred, which was more than fifty percent growth in a ten-year period, yeah, it seemed huge. But in front of anyone who lived here, it was huge, but it was still, you're still a pretty small town.
I see towns like this with the education potential that it has are becoming more and more scarce because people are developing everything. And I think we're sandwiched between Metro West and four ninety-fives. Kind of tech coming back a little bit. I think we'll find that this becomes a more and more, um, attractive place to come to.
I mean, it's clearly pretty attractive because, you know, Century Mills is, what, million dollar houses in there? Selling just fine. Or eight hundred thousand dollar houses. I think.
Yeah, they are.
The cheapest is like eight, but they're, they're selling.
It's that and the Oaks and, um, I think Foxville would be a little bit, but.
I don't know.
I think, I think you guys are doing a good job.
So, yeah, I mean, we're small, we're, generally, perspective is, is cautious, very cautious about development. And, and development, any development has to be the right development. So things that have happened over the years have been things like, we have the winery. I don't know if you know the winery in town. You know, that was a big farm that was preserved through an agricultural preservation, and at the same time, they were allowed to put in a winery and, and, you know, do, do a pretty big business there, which is a nice, you know, agricultural business. Things like the golf courses, which have been supported because they're nice, big, open, green spaces and not a lot of houses.
Well, they take advantage of the rural economy, so, you know, I think, you know, this fit really well.
I mean, I can't speak for everybody. I'm kind of that millennial, at the beginning of the millennial generation. And we moved here in part because there was a winery and a golf course, so we could see ourselves growing to be fifty, sixty, seventy, and still being able to enjoy a lot of the amenities in town. But my wife made the call because she liked the Colonials on Main Street there. I mean, it was as simple as like seeing a couple Colonials.
I can't really speak for other towns, but I mean, like you said, cautious is like the most, the best word to describe.
Yeah.
I mean, every single board is super cautious. I mean, despite what, you know, some people think, you know, we just wanna like blow up one seventeen and turn it into Route Nine or something. I mean, it's not.
Right.
Basically, the, the organizing philosophy of town being born or, or townsfolk is, it's been done this way. It will keep doing it this way. It doesn't matter if we have any recollection of why we're doing it this way or if it makes any sense. We've been doing it this way and we're gonna keep it going.
That is the.
Disagreement?
No, that's all right. Well stated.
Yeah, it's very conservative.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's a good balance in there. Like, you brought up the point of, uh, the concern of setting a precedent. You know, that's a slippery slope. If you start giving allowances now, that's not to say I don't see it compromised somewhere, but, um, I think there's a nice balance in there between preserving everything that everyone's worked for to make Bolton Bolton and making sure that Bolton remains relevant.
Great. Well, John, thank you for coming in.
You mentioned you travel better. You're comfortable with the meeting schedule?
Yeah, John and I talked about that. Comfortable, excited, motivated.
How long do you rent your van for at a time?
Fortunately, we graduated to a bus, and unfortunately, for Bolton residents, it's not a green bus.
It'll burn. You could, uh, if, if there's a quorum, you could conference into meetings. So in between sets or whatever.
You got, I'd sure be happy to love to see you dress on stage.
We don't have a conference phone.
Well, I called into an EDC meeting that you brought down.
I, um, I don't intend on, or plan on, I looked into this before we met, and I shouldn't be on the road anytime soon. It is a significant, like, on-the-radio band, so there, there is a commitment there, but, um, I also have a commitment to the town that I live in and the child that I'm raising here, so.
Well, you can.
I'm gonna have to Google and see.
You can also, um, watch, you know, most of our meetings are videotaped or taped.
Yeah, if you go through one page.
Stream. You can go back and stream the meetings and watch them after the fact, which, if you're in the middle of an ongoing hearing on a particular project you need to do in order to be up to date on it and be able to, be able to continue.
I will say that, and it's a great question because I'm, you guys put a lot of time. If there is ever a time that I need to be away, I can promise that it won't be felt. I will be up to date, send my thoughts, be here virtually if I need to be. And I would love to be if that's acceptable, but I, I wouldn't have taken this on if I felt like, um, I was going to diminish the value of what was going on here. So it is important to me.
We have stiff competition in the election.
I know.
You versus nobody.
I know.
Same as me.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Apparently, there's still a suspense.
I have to borrow all you keep signs and cross it out and put Neil in.
No, I mean, anybody could be a write-in, right, at the last minute? Petition.
I'm surprised there isn't more involvement, so far as like people wanting to get involved.
Well, I mean, it is a commitment, you know, and most people in town are, you know, working families and it's tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really not that bad. I mean, two nights a month. Usually have one meeting in the summer, time canceled because it's summertime, who wants to be here? And then it's almost always one around Thanksgiving or Christmas and those will.
Well, my point is, it is, you know, people don't just wanna sign on to the commitment of it.
It's not like, yes, I've been, we're in there every week.
Yeah.
Who knows what?
Do you have anything you wanna ask or know about me so far as comfort levels or anything else? An open book. I have no agenda or anything.
No, I think we're really glad you're interested in the planning board. Good to have a full planning board coming forward. So good luck. Thanks for the election.
It's also good to have a variety of people on a board, not just, somebody said.
A rock star.
But we're all builders, right?
Yeah, we're all builders. Somebody said, you know, oh, you're all builders, but I think you're the only builder. And now we're getting.
Should I dress like I'm getting on stage? That might be.
And now we're getting ready, so now we're gonna have no builders.
Well, you can do that when you do presentations at town meetings.
Yeah, it's like, someone get my mascara, that'll be fun. No, my wife put it on after those days. But, uh, yeah.
I'm looking.
It's fine, it's half. No, I mean, I don't know if we'll be back in the area, but.
No, I mean, I don't know if we'll be back in the area, but I'd love to, to host you all. It's usually like, uh, like the Palladium or House of Blues or like a shed somewhere.
So not Slater's openly?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you could play at Slater's.
A what?
Slater's.
So the library has, you know.
Oh, they have an open mic, the library, yeah.
I'll go in there full dress and just spoken word.
Acoustic.
Here in Bolton, we are, so.
No, they do, once a month, once a month, they do have an open mic.
Okay, that would be great.
If, if there's like a bar tab that we can win, I'll come in and do it for us.
No alcohol in the library.
Slater's bar is not open.
Yeah. Cool.
Where's the man in your van?
Land's down. Like the street.
I listen, I listen, they stream on Rhapsody.
Yeah.
And, uh, it kind of sounds like Nickelback.
It's very cock rock, sellout mainstream.
Yeah, that's what I told him on email, I was like, I'm not trying to offend you, but it sounds kind of radio.
I was like, that's exactly what we're doing.
If you guys have, uh, if you guys have the MLB Network, uh, one of our songs is gonna be part of the teaser tomorrow for the Red Sox versus Yankees.
That's cool.
So, yeah, I don't dress like it because I try to leave it on.
I, I was hoping you weren't like, you know, like, oh, we're trying to be, you know, the artistic kind of-
Where's the mullet?
Come on.
Dude, I used to be-
Still be on there?
I'll find a picture of the beautiful woman that I used to look like. My wife begged for years to cut my hair. I finally did, thank God. It was bad.
John, when I was younger, my last haircut was the one my parents gave me at high school graduation. And then I took a year off before I got off my bus to go to college and I spent a beautiful five years, couldn't, couldn't get out of there, too, always had to wait. And then eventually I said, well, I'm not really gonna get a job making more than seven dollars an hour with all this. Yeah, way longer than most.
Wow, that's impressive and tedious. I don't know, I, I went to school for banking, so this is kind of a strange term.
It's fun. There you go, we need that expertise.
Yeah.
So two bankers. So you're welcome to stay, we're gonna keep, we're gonna move on to, uh-
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure. So I want to encourage you to come to town meeting. What's the date?
Uh, May fifth.
May fifth?
Great.
Because that's where, you know, one of the big things that the planning board does, is where the magic happens, is look at our bylaws and propose new bylaws. And that's where the town votes on them.
Awesome. And this is gonna be a-
And because we have the spill of Jolene, we've got the marijuana bylaw, we've got a lot of stuff going on.
This really will be a sink of the mile to remember. Is there a place where I can learn and gather knowledge? I know townofbolton.com has a lot of information, but in general, what's the best way for me to get up to date so I'm on par with knowledge?
I can give you a copy of the warrant, that way you can see all the articles that are going forward.
Okay, great.
And our, the, the Bolton website, if you go to the planning board section, this, all our current stuff is in there, the bylaws are in there.
Great.
The bylaws, that's very interesting.
I usually just count on John to-
Quick reads.
I just count on Doug.
Huh?
Just kind of, we're all in trouble in a couple of weeks.
John, your turn.
No, we usually whip out, you usually whip out the bylaws and get to the stuff pretty fast.
Yeah, I'm still rolling the old bylaws.
I don't know where they are.
It's all the same thing, it's just in a different order.
So you're leaving now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So you're, you're, let me, are you in your thirties?
I just turned thirty-one, yeah.
Okay. Don't do this, Doug. Because I started in my thirties.
He used to be fresh face.
Wow. The future is so bright.
Where is the, where is the before and after? I thought of that today, I'm like, I have to use that.
That's amazing. They're like every US president looks like they age twenty years.
Yeah, see all this gray?
Still holding the air good though.
Yep. Definitely need to get the before and after picture.
Now you have to deal with, uh, with, uh, kids' parents.
You have no idea.
That's probably harder.
How many emails like that I get on baseball?
Yeah, that's probably harder than the sitting board.
It's unbelievable.
It's unbelievable. Why is my kid not playing three innings?
It's way more time than playing.
Seriously?
Yeah. So, uh, we need to, we need to look at the, uh, article seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, that's the kennel, special permit for kennels.
Oh, here, I printed it out.
So Erica spoke to-
Yeah, I'm sorry, where did I put it? I clicked out the email I sent you guys. There you go. Oh, here you go.
In the background.
Yeah.
This is sponsored by us, but brought to us by-
Well, Jenny worked on it with previously, with Linda.
Yeah, the town clerk and building inspector.
So, yeah, it was, it was worked on by planner, building inspector, town clerk. A year ago, we passed at town meeting a bylaw for, um, kennels. And this is adding some additional things to it, so.
So Eric's gonna be, you're gonna be the point person on this at town meeting.
So how does that work? So I just say this little spiel, right? But then any, do I, I don't, we're gonna-
If people, if there's a question that Jim, the moderator, wants to present, you're not, you don't have to put this on there.
Yeah, okay.
But people will say, like, let's just look at this real quick, so what do we have?
Why was the planning board okay with X Y Z?
Yeah, we need to have answers. So seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So seventeen is, um, to add a special, to add a section, special permit for kennels. So basically, we're saying that you want to have a kennel, you have to go through the special permitting process. You know, we did permit one recently. And the reason they went through the special permitting process is because they were in a business zone, there was, it was not allowed use there. And it's not as a right use in business, so. But in doing that, we realized it made sense that all kennels should be treated the same.
Right.
Have to go through the special. And that was a planning board, because I really feel that we, you know, we did that and we said- Yeah, we did say, I was there. You know, there, there shouldn't-
Why is it so hard?
Any, anyone in residential currently is not regulated at all. So kennels have traditionally been allowed in residential zones as a home occupation. And there are several kinds of home occupations that are traditionally allowed, they're not really in the bylaws anywhere. So nothing here says that they're not gonna continue to be traditionally allowed, it's just that the idea is that all kennels should be treated the same and they should be regulated the same. So, um, so to create a new kennel, you'd have to get a special permit, whether it's in residential or business. That's what the first one says. And then we had a question about the twenty-four month expiration. And according to these notes here, it's twenty-four months that you have to build it from the time you get your permit. So that's like a typical permit, that there's a twenty-four month, it's not that every twenty-four months you have to come back in.
It's just, it's just one twenty-four month period.
Unless you get an extension.
You have twenty-four months to, but after that, then you never have to-
Well, you can, you can, just like anyone else, you can come in and ask for an extension.
Well, but I'm saying the medical marijuana is every thirty-six months.
It's not that.
This is just one-
This is twenty-four months to establish.
This is related to building it.
Yeah, okay.
It's not to do with the business itself.
It's not, you know.
It's not like a license or something like that.
Once you've got it, if you don't make any change.
Exactly, you're done.
And therefore, those that are existing today are effectively grandfathered?
They're grandfathered, yes, because I checked that with town council to make sure.
Okay.
And just so everyone knows, any, any place with five or more dogs, not a homeowner with five dogs, but anyone who's keeping other people's dogs, five or more dogs is considered a kennel.
Now, so if you have five dogs, this is-
Other people's dogs.
If they are your own, you're not boarding them, then it doesn't count.
I wouldn't take it with me.
Okay, so, so-
That'll come up in the-
But I don't know that answer.
That's a second question, let me grab the-
That'll certainly, I mean, that's, that's the sticking question.
So if somebody has twenty dogs?
If someone, yeah, has just a bunch of dogs that are their own.
Well, the point is, some people breed dogs, okay? So they have a-
It has anything to do with ownership, I think it's if it's five-
Oh, just on the person, that would make sense, because what's really the difference if you're a neighbor?
That's a kennel if you're breeding.
Yeah, I agree.
But if you have a female dog, those puppies, you don't need to come in for a kennel license as long as you hand off to puppies.
But if you're a neighbor, what's the difference between somebody having ten dogs and somebody watching ten dogs?
Here, here's the fun thing.
Well, it's gonna be, and why is it smellless?
A kennel, if I had ten dogs, but I could have fifty sheep and I'm a farm.
That's great.
You know, people, my neighbors may may not like that, but there won't be anything they can say about that.
Yeah.
I guess my- I'd be tough in a town house, God, but.
I guess my point is-
We're trying, as hard as we can.
Why would anybody come forward and, do they have to declare themselves a kennel when they start? How does that work?
I mean, this is really about people living next to-
Well, they need to get a license too, so we're gonna find out regardless because they need a license as well.
But, but ones that are currently here don't. So anybody who's currently as a kennel?
His grandfather's kennel.
So they never come under purview of this?
Unless they're going to make a change to their business, then-
Or they halt operations for a while.
Right.
Two years, I would think, and come back to it.
Do people currently have kennels? I mean, they could be doing it under the table, but do some have certain ones?
A little bit, isn't it? We didn't regulate them.
Yeah, they're, they're-
So we just have a way of knowing, right? They can come back and say, I'm grandfathered, they're doing it for ten years, and we wouldn't know.
But if there's a nuisance, I'd say if there's a nuisance.
If they have a license, we would know.
Okay. License is wrong. Bring me your attitude.
From the town clerk, so if they have a yearly or an annual license they need to, to get.
Oh, so that already exists?
Oh, yeah.
But anybody who already has one will never come in, will never have to follow this? Will never have to come to it?
So this is, this is a special permit to create a kennel.
Okay, I got it.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, um, if it's already existing, they don't have to do it. But if they're gonna significantly alter it, just like if a business significantly alters it. Let's say they want to double in size and they want to start overnight, which they haven't been doing, or so, you know, change the business in some fundamental way, they would need to come in for a special permit. But there could be triggers, like, there could be nuisance issues.
So a nuisance issue could trigger it?
Yeah, they're, they're not keeping the place clean.
Yeah.
Their dogs are getting free.
So if somebody comes and complains to the town?
There's a nuisance, yeah.
Then they would trigger this.
I don't know, I don't know what it would trigger, but it would-
I'm just trying, if I have to talk about it, I just want to feel.
Yes, do you go talk to Linda and get her to be here? So there's a variety of ways that dog issues are monitored, I mean, there's a, there's a- That's true. There's a, what do they call it, the animal- Control. Animal control officer, you know, if there are dogs going around biting somebody or, you know, there's some kind of- There's a town person and then there's a state person and she like comes by every year and says, Jonathan, how many chickens do you have? How many cats, how many dogs are they? You know, you have to show that they've been, they had their rabies vaccination if you have a dog. So she comes around every year and verifies how many animals I keep.
What happens if you get caught without a license and doing that? Do you just get penalties?
I, I don't, there, there probably are penalties for dogs that do not have their rabies shots.
I'm just saying, like, if somebody just did this kennel, just started-
Well, I think, here's, here's the likelihood of what could happen. Somebody just starts a kennel or just says, oh, I'm gonna start babysitting dogs. But, you know, gee, it grew from five dogs to ten dogs to twenty dogs. And one of their neighbors says, my extra neighbor has an unlicensed kennel and complains to the town.
Yeah.
In that scenario, Erica and maybe the, the animal warden or whatever would notify this person that there's been a complaint issue that they're operating a kennel. Can you please come into the planning board to address this issue?
Okay.
In which case, they'd be made aware of the fact that they need to have a special permit to have a kennel and they need to go through the process. And usually, when somebody is called out for something, they want to make it right. They, you know, it's just gonna get messy if they don't, so. Usually, if you ask them to come in and say, here's the process, maybe you didn't know this, but here's the process, they'll, they'll start the process and go through with it. I mean, that, that would be the idea.
Okay.
So then the next article is, um, schedule abuses and it's saying where can you have one of these kennels? And we're basically saying you can have one anywhere, because they've been in residential, we've allowed them in business and no reason to say they wouldn't be allowed in business or industry. So it's putting it in our chart of uses and saying that they're allowed by special permit. So special permit is, you can't just do it, you gotta apply to the board, go through the process, it'd be granted your special permit. And then this board has that wide authority to impose conditions on that special permit. Based on the information that relates to that particular case. There's a hearing with lots of feedback from the board. The voters are notified and-
Okay.
So, you know, you might have nobody or you might have like six people, like you have tonight.
This is like a happening place tonight. This is more than normal.
What do you mean?
Yeah.
Was this unusual, this amount of-
Well, it depends what's going on. Sometimes, that's every week.
There's always a few people here for something or other.
Yeah, it's, there's typically some people, but it depends on, you know, various points in time. If this board might be reviewing a subdivision approval process or for a period of months. There'll be people coming in every time. If there are hot issues relating to town meeting, people will come in.
You have to go to bigger homes, like the library or a wooden building and people would still be jammed in there. That has to be, that's pretty exceptional, but it has happened.
Probably have meetings where nobody comes.
Yeah.
There's nothing that'll come for us. So that's it really, it's just establishing the special permitting process for new kennels, new kennels or grandfather and, um-
So I don't have to say anything unless there's questions.
Putting it in the chart of uses.
Unless there's questions and Jim feels like I should, we should answer them.
I would, I, I would just say, this is, this is, these are two, you know, an additional follow-on from what we did a year ago, where we put in place, um-
When I give a kennel by law? When I present it.
Yeah.
Just give a few sentences.
And these are just, you know, just establishing that anybody who wants to start a new kennel has to get a special permit, just like any other business in town. And adding it to our chart of uses and saying it's allowed and all. So this came, this all came up about the dog daycare at the soft box.
Yeah, from her one statement, has anybody ever done it?
No, she's like, why is it so hard for me in a business district to do what people are doing in residential without
Makes sense.
Any paperwork? But honestly, I, I looked at it and said, it's kind of crazy that we don't regulate kennels at all. You know, so much regulation in this town, we don't regulate that, why, why is that?
Okay.
So we never voted on that. I would make a motion that we vote to endorse and support, um, to- Seventeen, eighteen.
Second?
Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Nineteen is a separate issue.
Okay.
You have seventeen and eighteen.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Nineteen is the acceptance of Drummond Hill Road, the Linnwood Circle and Field Soulway.
So it is, that would be, this would have the-
Teaching.
A read it.
At this point, people are gonna be down, so I imagine there won't be many questions. Or they'll be pissed off and-
Is, is, is-
Be after the marijuana stuff.
Is the funding stuff coming after us or before?
Funding is after.
Marijuana's before, the funding is at the end. I really don't like that.
Down, that's-
Well, maybe they might be thinking about fire truck or something, I don't know.
I'm good with that.
So nineteen.
So this is the time, first about on this?
It is.
I would make a motion that we support the town, we're accepting these three roads.
Well, what about the acceptance fee?
I'd, we'll work that out. We'll work that out.
Okay.
I would check a bit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That feels good.
That really drove through there. I was pretty impressed today.
I am too.
Because I've been driving years in the making.
Drummond Hill. Just, yeah, well, we, we moved here in 2010 and we drove through that neighborhood like, oh my God, we won't move in that neighborhood. The houses were just passed up.
Yeah, it's come a long way in the last couple of years. It really has.
Drummond Hill Road, if you haven't driven any, it's really a nice neighborhood.
Cool.
And you'll pass by the intersection and question.
Yeah.
I remember my hard hat on on Patrick Tate would stand there.
I did that. I got out of my truck. I was.
Cars go flying down Harvard Road, but.
You wanna put that on.
Not so much on the other ones.
Do you wanna put that on public records?
Is traffic even heavy on Harvard Road though? Because I went today. I was there for like ten minutes.
It's not heavy, but people fly. People fly.
People fly.
Very, very.
It's a straight road.
But.
Wide road.
There are many roads.
Only straight wide road is dangerous.
No, there are.
Everybody has to drive defensively.
Yeah, there are.
I just still think it'd be safer to be on the smaller road than on the bigger.
No, it makes sense. It sounds like there's a bigger issue where they need a slowdown sign, something.
The issue is, there's a ton of tall pines in that area and that lot was very densely populated.
And they cleared.
Cleared it and everybody's.
It was.
Well, that's what she said in her.
I think.
The issues are, the issues are new trees to be cut down, rocks to be moved and safety, and there are no issues with those three points.
Technically, I think he's supposed to have a permit from EPA to do that. Anything over an acre, if you're clearing it, you need to have a swep and you need.
When I drove, when I drove by, I was actually quite shocked how open it was.
I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's what I did.
Approved EPA?
Construction, construction general permit. If you're clearing more than an acre. It's under fifty's.
I was pretty shocked to see.
It might not be more than an acre though.
Depends.
Southern part of.
Oh, no, he didn't clear more, he didn't clear more than an acre.
Okay, well then.
I bet you.
Those are close for lots of.
I mean, I just looked at, I was just looking at his plan and the lot's one point eight six.
You think that's a possible?
It's, it's close.
I was just saying it's a possibility.
It's close.
Yeah.
Now, was that always a lot or did it get divided out when Drummond Hill happened?
No, that was always a lot.
That corner lot is always a lot.
But that wasn't the lot he's been holding, we've been holding.
Correct. This is outside of the southern.
Yeah, that's.
This is only.
And he has a lot inside.
Okay, so should we assign the planning board reports then? Or do we?
Yes.
Okay.
So John's doing the, uh, which one?
We must start at the top, Article seven.
You were gonna do the FEMA.
Okay.
I'm doing the barn stuff, aren't I, Jonathan?
Okay, so Article seven is Jonathan.
I don't mind doing Drummond Hill.
Village overlay was ten troops.
Ten troops, yeah. You used to do all of these yourself.
Yeah.
So I'm just farting it out because I might not be here forever like Doug and everybody needs to know how to do this.
Did you?
Well, I was noticing today.
I've been trying for three years to pass it on you.
No, I was noticing today, I was noticing today whenever there was a question how we look to you, so it's gonna be a big hole.
I know, I'm gonna start looking today and say, you better like brush up. You had Erica, because it's like, I'm always looking to Doug or Jennifer.
I'll have Doug on the speaker.
So next time I'm gonna be, what do we do and who's gonna say we need to have a continue?
That's most senior.
Oh, yeah, John, come on.
Now that Doug's leaving, I'll actually have to learn stuff.
I don't know. Richie's gonna learn, it's all right.
I can't be, I'm like the lamb over here and just like.
I'm just learning.
Okay, so James and John are gonna, I'm gonna be looking to you for.
How many years has it been, James?
I've been here a long time.
A long time.
What is the distinction?
I'm not elected as, I was appointed. I actually am not a US.
He's a bread.
I can't be elected. We would have dragged on a long time ago if we could.
And that's like, that's like a law for Massachusetts or the whole country that you can't be on.
I don't know.
It's a bone regulation.
Or it's just bone.
So you have to be appointed if you're not a US.
So.
Well, he can't be an elected.
I got it, I got it.
He can be an appointed board.
I think the rule is that when the five of us are here, he can't vote, but when one of us is missing, he can fill in. I think that's the rule.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And we had, we had quite a few years where we were not, we had members who didn't come. So James was always a member.
Oh, wow.
I mean, for years.
Very important part.
If you think about it.
We're not usually this busy where everybody's here. I mean, a few times when it's well.
In group?
No, we're this busy. We're just not this well attended. Right, that's funny.
Yeah. Coming in very golden era. Pretty amazing.
So for the FEMA articles, I wasn't sure about the motion and everything for the consent calendar or the consent agenda. I don't know which one it is.
So who's doing FEMA?
It's John, so I think.
So you would read the, um, planning board report.
Mm-hmm.
And you would say, I'm actually gonna do the report for all three articles because it's the same. And we voted to unanimously support all three. And I wanna make a motion that we vote these three articles as a consent agenda.
I would have to say the same thing for seventeen and eighteen.
Yes.
Consent, consent agenda?
Oh, yeah, and there's no reason why we shouldn't do the same thing for seventeen and eighteen.
So, yeah, so you're gonna.
So you do the report first, then you say, I wanna make a motion to vote these articles as a consent agenda. The moderator needs to accept that and they'll say, there's been a motion to do that, which means we don't have any debate. And we vote all these articles at the same time. If everyone's okay with that, we'll move forward. If anyone wants, has any questions or doesn't want to do that, we'll do them individually. So it really depends on whether or not anyone stands.
So that's saying there's no, no discussion.
No discussion.
But if there's any discussion, then you have to do seventeen and eighteen separate.
That's right. And if somebody said, no, I have a question, then he would say, let's, let's withdraw the consent agenda, wouldn't he? But if nobody cared, then somebody else would second it and then we would vote on the consent agenda and then it would.
Just to save time.
So do you guys need me to write that down for you?
Yes.
I will modify that stuff.
Yeah, so.
No, I would need it too, so I'm, that's why.
And if you were gonna say a few words about it first, which I always think is a good idea. So you get the report, which is just one line. Planning board duly noticed hearing, uh, voted unanimously to support articles in, in support.
Article seventeen and eighteen, you could say like that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Then you would say, these articles, you know, whatever you're gonna say, or this is a follow-on.
You could say, this is typical.
Yeah.
About the FEMA maps.
Three, four years.
Three, four years.
To that.
By the federal.
If we don't approve it, then no one can, the town can get floodplain insurance through.
I wouldn't even say that.
I would even like beat the cranks.
No, I would just say.
But that's the funny part, I tell you.
I can see you totally wanna do that.
We need to, we need to vote to accept these to be, to be.
I like being in the federal government.
And.
That's an elected position, town cranks.
What is a town crank?
No, it's just like, he's gonna say, the federal government has redrawn the maps and we can take it or, you know, we have to take it. And that's gonna get people upset. What do you mean?
I did buy many millions of rounds of ammunition over the past few years. Well, that will get them spinning.
Oh, so these are the militia oriented people? Well, no, no, it's just like that the federal government is like telling you, the part of your land is wet for three hundred years.
Yeah, all right. It'll, it'll take you a few years of observation, but you'll start to pick up.
If you vote against this, they will have tapped your phones and then they'll go online and they already know what we're standing.
You stay for this.
We just wanna gloss over that because we just like to get.
So it's not a big deal if people wanna ask questions. It just means we gotta vote each one individually. And, you know, in the interest of, usually floodplain, I mean, we could look back. I think we voted on it, you know, four or five times the last twelve years, so.
It's very familiar to me.
Usually not any questions, but, you know, who knows?
Oh, in case there are questions and people wanna know if their property's been affected, I did create a slide, this is like an alternate slide with the FEMA map. So I don't know if you guys think that's a good idea? Where Gary could pull it up if not, if needed.
I think it's a good idea.
So it's kinda hidden in the back pocket.
It's a good idea, but I think it would be wholly ineffective because there's, you haven't been to town.
People.
They'll have a big screen and they'll have this big map of town and people.
At least it shows we're anticipating it and.
Yeah, but it's.
Well, it's there.
But I, I think the thing to say is that we have them on file at town hall, right?
Yep.
And if you wanna come into town hall and look at them, that you can come.
I mean, I think the way it works is FEMA redistricts everything or something like that. And then your insurance company lets you know that your house is in the floodplain and you're gonna have to pay more or they're not gonna cover you. I don't think that's happening to too many people in Polton, where we would have heard about it.
And then I have the alternate slide for the barn in case Article seven doesn't pass and we move to Article eight. So if for some reason people decide not to vote to move the barn bylaw from general bylaw to zoning bylaw, then that changes the numbering under Article eight for that addition. So I have, I have that alternate.
How many times have we voted on this? I think it's like the fourth time, so that would become Article.
Probably like seven.
No, I think it remains Article eight. It's just a changed Article eight. I don't know exactly how that.
Yeah, then you have to make a motion to change Article.
Yeah, and it's, and then Gary would put the slide up on the screen so everyone can see what that change is.
And the, and the logic would be that since we did not vote to reorder, it would still be under.
It would still be under reservation, so therefore we need to change this back to where it is.
I like to add further that non-sustantive changes to the no maintenance ballot be permitted in order to comply with the number of dollars of the code. Just put that in every time. That's great.
Standard language.
I like it.
Oh, who's doing the aura article funding? Who wants to do the pedestrian mobility fund?
Sounds like a banker thing.
Sure. There's gonna be a lot of heat on this, isn't there?
Oh, yeah.
Much.
It might be how you put it.
Yeah, maybe.
It's a discussion.
I never really can tell.
Oh, I can tell.
Oh, actually, yeah.
Yeah. Two people are gonna wanna get up.
If folks ask questions, to whom do they ask them initially? The moderator? And then if, will you? I feel that responses from us is, is a good idea. I'll stand up and address them as well.
Yeah, it's more, it's more likely that the question would go either to, somebody would ask of the.
Advisory board.
Advisory board or of the, whatever the board, the mobility committee.
So it's unlikely that you would need to say.
Yeah, so there were two members that were the advisory board.
Yep.
Thought that it should just go into the general fund and shouldn't be going to this new fund for mobility. So that might come up again. So they were at the Board of Select meeting, they, they voiced, you know, that concern, so.
But nineteen, if, if there is pushback, it's pushed back towards the planning board probably, right?
No.
Not necessarily.
For the street acceptance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Acceptance in general.
Yes.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Although somebody might get up and say, what does the DPW chief think about?
Yeah, okay, sure.
That happens quite a bit.
Well, it might be an explanation about the lighting, how that was waived.
Yep, that'll definitely be there, sure.
So Eric is, after this meeting, Eric is gonna let them know when that decision was made a long time ago.
Okay. When this guy was around.
See, I do.
See, there are lots of waivers. There's one.
The weird thing is, is it sounded familiar to me, but I wasn't even in town at that point, so. I don't know how it sounded familiar.
Cause we had the same conversation on Century Mill quite a few times.
Maybe.
So how do they go at Century Mill? There are no streetlights?
In the permit, it says it calls for a lane. So I don't know.
I mean, I. I think we left him in at Century Mill because the police chief wanted him. We had it a butter who was arguing strongly against them.
So this is, this is the hard thing is that we're not speaking with one voice. I mean, when I drive into, you know, a development like Foxwoods at six, like.
Foxwood.
Foxwood, everybody's.
Foxwoods is definitely too many lights.
No, there's, there was a Foxwoods in Pennsylvania where I grew up. But every, you know, every door light is on, plus they have a light on at the end of their driveway. So, you know, there's plenty of light.
Right.
Um, from the houses. I don't know, but we go back and forth on this and it'd be good to get.
Bowls is a small town. We don't need streetlights.
I think in the future then we should probably look at our subdivision rules and regs in terms of lighting.
Yeah, so if you can put that on the agenda.
Oh, wait, rather than having to have a weed ranch sometimes.
We had to have lights at sunset.
You do or you do not?
We did have to.
Okay, so what are they like?
They're very colonial looking. So they're, they're like six feet high. They're not like the twenty foot ones. They're pretty tall, but they're, but they're like. Lanterns. Yeah.
But they run with whale fat. That's makes a whole difference.
It's actually, yeah. You know, they're, they're, the, the lights out here on the road that are orange, they glow orange, which are awful, but it's not like that. This is. It is. No, that, well, we have asked this, I don't know if that was the builder's choice, but I like the ones out. Maybe forty B's probably have different standards.
Maybe it's different. I don't know.
Light pollution is a big issue.
I mean, either way, it was waived, what, eight years ago or we're just, I mean, it's not, you can't really push it out.
Oh, no, yeah, just trying to be consistent.
You agree?
Well, I, I think honestly, there's been a trend away from streetlights. Yeah, so we, so Larry said, we have to pay for them once we accept the streets. I mean, the issue for me is like, when do they get shut off? I mean, the nice thing about, you know, them being on the houses and the end of driveways, people like go in their houses. Everybody's home and maybe they shut them off at eight thirty or nine and they're not on all night. So, you know, to me, that's the way it should be to take it shut off by somebody. But if it's a streetlight that the town's operating, you know, how, I don't, I just don't know how that gets traded off.
There's like a random streetlight at the intersection of Green Road and, and Berry Hill Road. I was wondering how it got put there. Just a random streetlight. I don't know if you've gone that, called that way.
It's a tough. It's a tough road in the dark.
Yeah, there is that little weird little triangle island and stuff, so.
Probably would.
Anyway.
Did you guys have any? Did you guys have any more comments about the village overlay presentation that I said?
I think it's pretty good. I read to Ken's.
Comments?
Well, his verbal, what he's gonna say.
Okay.
It sounds pretty good. I mean, he fills in the gaps. Any question I would have had, just looking at the slide, it sounds like his talking points will cover it, so.
And then the medical marijuana figures. I don't know if you wanna change my thoughts about those? That was the last thing.
Well, the only thing I would point out is when you look at these maps. Those maps. And you really have to overlay the fifteen hundred foot on the five hundred foot, the first five hundred foot. You know, it does show that both, um, come and, um.
Paragon.
Paragon would be allowed. If you look at Skinner, on the five hundred foot, the pink is right up to it, so I'm not a hundred percent sure if it is or isn't. But maybe just that building is just an oasis that might be okay.
Do these slides are handouts at the town?
I don't know. However, you guys wanna do it?
That one little house that came, you know, that would.
Right, that was abandoned as a house, that would open up that area.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and he did potential dwellings, which is not what we need to look at. I mean, when the bylaw is passed, it's, you know, and when somebody comes in for an application, it's.
Potential dwell?
So this is full, that full build out.
Right.
Right, right. So when you do potential, the only place left is Paragon and so.
You want me to?
That's our future right there. I don't want the potential. Just, just the five hundred and the fifteen hundred existing.
You want me to see if Gary can do the five hundred and the fifteen hundred together? Cause that's really the true depiction of where these facilities can go.
Yeah, if you could, I guess.
All right, I'll, I'll ask.
Cause it also looks to me like Bolton Office Park is, is, is in, is clear too, which I didn't realize.
Potential one is actually interesting. It looks like there could be a lot of houses behind me. I have to talk to the planning, you? I have to talk to the planning board.
Where is?
Potential.
Yeah.
Finally.
So Bolton Office Park, on which one are you?
Well, I was just.
So this, this building right here is clear in both cases, so I think that would work there.
This is, this is interesting. I know it's not like this. Just this, the potential.
So you have the technical?
Yeah. Well, you see where, you know, you see where the.
500 foot buffers or.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, you could see.
But it'd be interesting to see if Davis Group does do the 650 as amendment.
I'm sure they will.
So 650 would knock out Cobham, it would leave Paragon and it would knock out. I think it would knock out everything other than.
The Paragon.
Yeah, would not. It would knock out.
But you can't in my house. Hey, tell me that.
So it's like those two on here.
That's all extra.
So then you're, you're, by doing that, you run the risk that the attorney general, I think, wouldn't approve it because you're saying only this one particular place.
Power spray.
Yeah.
Well, that is here.
Power spray.
Yeah. But I don't know. I don't know that.
It's weird, it goes down the, if there's a city alley, you're gonna be gone.
It's weird. It's like there's no brush. It's just all trees.
What David's gonna take, you're gonna, you're gonna take over, if the medical marijuana doesn't pass, you would.
And we continue the efforts and Doug's.
Would you?
Yeah.
Or you'd be disgusted and you'd just say, well, we'll just.
I'm often disgusted.
We'll just go, no, you just say, okay, it's my special permit. We're done. People didn't wanna have our local bylaw, forget it.
I'm optimistic.
Well, where, where's the light between like?
I mean, there's no way that's not gonna pass. It's just whether, you know, Davis Group remends it and then.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, and then the attorney general says, I reject it. Then you could go back to the 500 recently.
Can you?
I don't know. Have to hold a special time?
Yeah. But what, no, but with the, the clause of severability, can't, can't you just take out that residential clause and then keep the 1,500 and still keep the bylaw?
You could, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so.
But you'd probably wanna put the 500 back. You'd try to put it back.
Yeah.
Maybe not.
Yeah.
We're trying to.
I'm saying the rest of them might stand.
So John, the most fun is reading minutes and signing off. How far behind are we?
I don't think we're that far behind. Maybe three.
Three. Eight, nine. I was reading the schedule here. I thought we were up by eight.
I know.
What the heck? What happened?
Offline, can I get a better understanding of the 500, 1,500 and 650? I don't want to get you guys up, but.
Yes, absolutely.
At another point.
So what we've done is proposed a local bylaw for the medical marijuana, um, dispensaries. Meaning that there's a state regulation in place, but, but local towns can go a little bit further with their own bylaws. So we put together a pretty simple one that just said, you have to go through special permitting process, which is the same thing we're saying with the dog kettles and which we pretty much say with everything, you know? You gotta go through special permitting. It's gotta be a rigorous review. And the state bylaw has a 500 foot setback to places where children target, schools, churches, playgrounds. We changed that to 1,500 feet.
Well, I wasn't here.
And we added 500 feet for many residents. So. And also said it was only allowed in business zones, not residential zones. So when you do a map on those things, you end up with only a couple of places in towns where it could possibly work.
Excellent.
And we were just discussing where they were and.
The next Paragon is one of them.
So on the east end of town, Paragon and Cobham, both sides of 117, are two industrial zone parcels where there are big buildings that are underutilized that could be locations. The people we're talking about would like it to not be allowed on the hanging east right side, Cobham, because there are residents behind them. They're more than 500 feet, but if they extend the setback to residences to 650 feet, then that parcel is gonna be eliminated. And if it's eliminated, I think it'll mean that only one parcel is allowed and I, I think there's a potentially. Every, every bylaw that the town passes has to then go to the attorney general's office and they have to approve it. And if they see it as unconstitutional or there's some issue with it, they can kick it back and say, it's not approved.
Understood.
But nobody, you know, wants to end up with just the state regulations.
Which Dan Lindsay will always say, it's not a law, it's a. What does, what does he say? It's not a law, it's.
Regulation.
It's a regulation, so.
Right.
Nobody wants that. So it'll pass, just what's amended. Larry Delaney did it. He was the official nominator. Nominated John. It's a very uneventful caucus. It's kinda funny. A little happy.
So Doug, the town would like to have a get together since you're leaving the planning board. Are you available our next meeting?
I'm not available.
Our next meeting like.
I will be involved in other town boards. They don't need to have a get together.
Well, this is something they would like to do.
I'm not going anywhere.
Doug, it's not for you, it's for us.
It's for us.
Well, there are two, there are two options, Doug. There's like, there's, you come an hour early and people come and pay the respects or.
Or if you want a table on the same thing.
Or we keep it simple and we all just bring some nice things to drink for the meeting.
That sounds good.
You like the latter.
Simple, yeah.
Are you sure?
Absolutely.
Okay, Linda and Michelle thought that it should be a town-wide.
So everybody's, you know.
That's very nice.
Amongst ourselves, don't be good, Doug, but everybody needs to like step up their baking or bring something nice to drink for our next meeting. That's, is that our next one? No.
Yeah, for the 23rd. Yeah, that's, I think that's Doug's last meeting, right?
So that would be, I think so.
Yeah.
Hold a tent and sit in the back and enjoy.
Okay.
Okay, that's nice.
That really makes you feel like you're allowed to pass you.
Could give you like a, a cane and a bone on it.
Everyone's getting so disappointed that you don't wanna go.
No, that's all right.
They can come to the planning board.
Okay.
I think you sent.
It'll be all right.